Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Five of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for all those who died in the last week, particularly Paul Louis Quinn, loving brother of our good friend Robert Ozzy Quinn, uncle and Army veteran, Mary Ann Noto, devoted wife, mother, grandmother, sister of our friend Joe Wexler and aunt, Dr. Joseph V. Crouchenuk, beloved husband, father of Scranton Times reporter and columnist Boris, grandfather, brother and uncle, Harry Joseph Michael Kirby, loving husband, father of city employee Laurie Reed, grandfather, United States Marine Corps veteran of the Korean War and 28-year veteran of the Scranton Fire Department, Mark Colin Walsh, devoted son, husband, father, brother, uncle, former member and president of the Scranton School Board and former Scranton City Council Solicitor and their dear families and friends they leave behind. Mr. McGough?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here.
Mr. Lascom?
Here.
Mr. Joyce?
Here.
Mrs. Evans? Here. Dispense with the reading of the minutes please.
Third Order 3A, Agenda for the City Planning Commission meeting held April 24, 2013.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3B, Audit status from Robert Rossing and Company received April 18, 2013.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3C, Agenda for the zoning hearing board meeting to be held May 8, 2013.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Do we have any clerk's notes tonight?
No, Mrs. Evans.
Thank you, Mrs. Craig. Do any council members have announcements at this time?
Please. I was asked to announce that the Scranton High School Football Boosters Club or Friends of the Scrantonites is having their first annual Scrantonites Pasta Dinner. It will be conducted at Scranton High School in the main cafeteria on Friday, May 3rd from 5 to 8. Charge is $10 and takeouts are available. That's Friday, May 3rd from 5 to 8 at Scranton High School.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Election Day is Tuesday, May 21st, I'm sorry. Be an informed voter by taking advantage of these educational events and candidate debates sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County and the University of Scranton's Political Science Department. All of the following events are open to the public and will take place at the University of Scranton. A Lackawanna County Ballot Questions Panel Discussion will be held Monday, April 29th at 7:00 p.m. Political science professors Jean Harris, Ph.D. from the University of Scranton and Thomas Baldino, Ph.D. from Wilkes University, will serve as panelists for a discussion exploring the five questions that will appear on the May ballot. The discussion will explain how voters' decisions at the ballot box will affect future government in Lackawanna County. Time will be allotted for questions from the audience. In addition to ballot questions, voters will also be asked to select seven members for a Home Rule Charter Study Commission. The League of Women Voters has partnered with the Greater Scranton Chamber of Commerce to gather information on the 38 candidates for the commission, which will be made available online through both the Chamber and League of Women Voters websites. A candidate forum for the Democratic candidates for the Office of Lackawanna County Register of Wills will be held on Tuesday, April 30th at 7:00 p.m. That is the following day. Four Democratic candidates will appear on the May ballot for this office. One Republican candidate will face off against the Democratic winner in the general in November. Also, a candidate debate involving Democratic candidates for the Office of Scranton City Council will be conducted Wednesday, May 8th at 7:00 p.m. And finally, the two Republican candidates for the Office of Scranton Mayor will debate on Monday, May 13th at 7:00 p.m. And the, well, all of the Democratic candidates, I believe there are four, four, for the Office of Scranton Mayor will debate on Tuesday, May 14th at 7:00 p.m. And that's it.
Fourth Order, Citizens Participation.
Our first speaker tonight is Ron Elman.
Good evening.
You know, we've taken different roads now and then, but you're still my counsel. I guess you're stuck with me to the end, probably like Dillinger's mother was stuck with him. I know you're wondering what kind of nonsense I got tonight to put up with. Well, here it comes. A majority of unconscionable Penn Security Bank Board members, in all their wisdom, of course, to rid themselves of this archaic tax burden, have donated. Now, they have donated the bank building on Cedar Avenue. And to all people, they have donated it to Goodwill. The Goodwill that has sat on this school for 20 years, not explaining where all the money is and not done nothing except tell us they're gonna work on it, that's who's ending up with this building. This is just a deplorable, senseless action. It's against the people of this city. It's evading their duty to pay taxes. This was done last Thursday, if somebody wants to know, you know. That building should have been taken away from the school I'm talking about years ago and sold to somebody credible. It's still sitting there, it'd probably be sitting there for another 20 years. This looks like, what are we gonna do with another building like this off the tax rolls? Unless somebody suggested the city might buy it from Goodwill for the library. Another one of Dougherty's shady deals might be in the oven right now. Why else would all this be going on? Goodwill doesn't need it, the city doesn't need it, there's no money for a library, but there's a reason for all this going on. This complete evasion, to do their duty to pay taxes in this city, should be retaliated by the people. We need, if we use that bank for any reason whatsoever, we should quit. This is an attack against the taxpayers. It's against every single one of us to do something like this. They own half that street right around the bank. What if they want to give everything up? You know, it doesn't hurt them. This just, everything keeps falling down on the taxpayers and here we are, broke, you This is just, I don't know what can be done about it, but this has got to stop somewhere. We lost the building downtown for $2 billion. I think, I forgot what it paid in taxes now, and I don't know what this paid, I didn't even ask, but this is nothing but a deliberate evasion by them to pay city taxes. Well, as you know, we had a, Tuesday night, the taxpayers had an interesting meeting. Mr. Carter Moon and Mr. Morgan and Ms. Randall were there. And I want to say that, as much as I wanted to, I didn't attack her adversely like people thought I would for, that was good behavior. Now, we got, Mr. Cartwright's gonna come back another time, I was told by Ozzy. We got four qualified people wanting the position of leading this city, for whatever reasons, I don't know why anybody would want this job myself. But they all were willing to accept the $50,000 salary. I can't understand why we voluntarily raised the salary at this time when we need money so bad. I'm not trying to be adverse about it, I just don't understand. In fact, if you ask me, these four people should be sent to Scranton counseling and the one that, the one that lasts to the end could be the mayor, because this is such a thankless, hard job, and I just don't see how anybody could accomplish what this city needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lee B. Morgan.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The first thing I have here today is, you know, I did hear Mrs. Evans talk about city residents today that had passed, and I don't know if the council and the mayor, and I don't want to single out anybody for accolades, you know, I think everybody should be respected, but I don't know if it's possible for the city to make a Mark Walsh Day for one day on April 4th, and the same thing for the Scranton School District, because I really think he was a real genuine human being, and politics wasn't, I don't think politics was in the front of his mind. And I remember at the school board, I remember all the things the newspaper said about him today. I know people he's helped pro bono, and that's something he didn't have to do, and I just think he kept giving to the community in any way he could. And I'd just like to see the Scranton School District, the City of Scranton acknowledge that a resident like that lived in our city and contributed so much. And, you know, maybe it'll fall on deaf ears and maybe it won't. Maybe somebody on council will go down and talk to the mayor, and he might find it to be acceptable. Maybe the members of the Scranton School Board may think that May 4th is a good time to remember a person who, a Scrantonian who gave a lot to the city. I don't think everything should be about, you know, politics, and I think he was just a, really a great person who showed what leadership really was many times. So that's basically all I have here today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Doug Miller.
Good evening, Council, Doug Miller, Scranton. I just too would like to begin echoing some of the comments Mr. Morgan made. I too would like to pay my respects to Attorney Walsh. He certainly is someone I had a great deal of respect for. When I started attending council meetings years ago, he happened to be the council solicitor at the time, that's how far back, you know, that it takes me. And, you know, I just always remember him as being a very kind individual, someone who was caring and a very honest individual, and I know he'll be missed by many in the community, so I just want to, you know, express my condolences to all his friends and family and thank him for all of his contributions to the city. Moving on to the agenda tonight, this would be 5B in regards to the project dealing with the West Lackawanna Avenue Bridge. We're looking to transfer funds, $287,000 from projects involving the West Side Falcons and I believe the North Scranton Little League. I understand that there may be some resentment towards, you know, the administration and the council for taking those funds away from those projects, but at the same time, I think all of us know full well that, you know, we've had a lot of problems with the West Lackawanna Avenue Bridge, and it's certainly a dangerous situation right now, and it's something that needs to be addressed, you know, right away. And from reading the newspaper, I do understand that both of these leagues are understanding of the situation, and they know that this needs to take priority right now. You know, Councilman Lascom brought this to the forefront, he's been working diligently on this for many months now, and I'm glad to finally see something on the agenda that's going to allow us to put funding towards this, because, you know, I almost feel sorry for Mr. Lascom, because he's gone back and forth with PennDOT and DPW and nothing, nobody ever listened to him, it fell on deaf ears. Well, finally, you know, we see some actions being taken and his hard work's paying off, and hopefully in the end, this will be resolved once and for all, and, you know, we can relieve a potential burden that certainly, if anything were to happen, and this bridge did have to be shut down, it's a main artery into the west side of the downtown, and that would certainly be an inconvenience for the residents of this city. In regards to the pilots, we've had many discussions on this, and we had our representatives here, and even before that, but I bring that up tonight because I know there's some legislation going back and forth down Harrisburg in regards to trying to get the nonprofits to contribute more to, you know, distress municipalities. And it's my hope that something will come into play and legislation can be passed that will give us the opportunity to get more from nonprofits in the community, because certainly, you know, seeing our financial status the way it is right now, we could certainly use their help. If they have the ability to contribute to the city, then I believe that they should be obligated to do so. They're given the services that the taxpayers pay for, and it's only right that they contribute as well. The final issue I have tonight, and I think we're all gonna be talking about this soon as we're gonna be heading into the warmer months now, this is the annual pool discussion we have here. And I just wasn't sure if we've begun having any discussions with DPW as far as what pools we plan on having open this summer. I know Novembreno and Capalis have been shut down the last couple summers. Capalis has been shut down the longest, I believe it's four or five summers now. We were told splash parks were going in and all sorts of other things. Personally, I'm against a splash park, I don't see the relevance to it. They were built many years ago to be swimming pools, and that's what they should be. So it's my hope that those pools will be open this summer. Maybe we can get an answer from Mr. Dur on that. I know there's an issue of a lack of manpower supposedly to operate these pools, lack of money. I'm sure there's many caring citizens out there that would like to see their pool open. I don't see why we couldn't, perhaps if the DPW did need assistance in getting these pools cleaned up, if we can get neighborhood volunteers or even our neighborhood associations involved in assisting the DPW in cleaning up these pools and getting them in operation for the kids this summer, because I just don't feel that these children in this community should suffer another summer without a swimming pool in their neighborhood. Another suggestion I have, I know it's been brought up in the past, perhaps we can consider partnering up with the Scranton School District and have discussions with them and see if they would be willing to assist us in getting these pools open, because it affects the children that they educate and that they provide funding for as well. So it affects everyone, all sides, and I think we just can't sit back and let another summer go by and have these children suffer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our sign-in sheet. Is there anyone else who cares to address Council?
Ms. Bamberger, Rich Hansen, I'm the senior representative of the government of the Scranton Army Ammunition Plant, and I'm here tonight.
Could you?
Sure.
And once again, if you...
Rich Hansen, I'm the commander's representative of the Scranton Army Ammunition Plant, it's also known as Chamberlain, and I'm here tonight to answer any questions that anyone may have about the parking permit that we're asking the city for. I know that tonight's supposed to be the second reading, and I believe it's also, you're also gonna vote on it, and I just want to make sure that the city understands that we're not asking to park on Mattis or River, only in heightened security conditions, and we really haven't gone to a heightened security condition since 9/11. So if we did happen to go to a heightened security condition, we would in fact have to use those parking areas, otherwise we would, you know, shut down the streets by, you know, doing invasive inspections on all vehicles for the employees, and it's something that we certainly don't want. So I'm not asking to park there every day, just, you know, during those heightened security conditions.
Well, based on, I believe it was Councilman McGough's suggestion regarding permit parking, we have asked the administration and the mayor if that would be possible, so that the employees would be able to park there year-round using permit parking, and we're waiting for a response on that.
Okay, so will the vote be deferred then, or?
Oh, no.
Okay.
No, no.
Okay. So if there's no questions?
Just speaking for myself, this, to me, seems to be common sense, just to vote yes on it if it's, you know, a security issue and it will also make traffic flow easier through that area during those times. And also, you know, I stated it since those meters, the meters were initially put up, they should have never been put there in the first place. The point of meters isn't to basically put an extra tax on employees, it's to create turnover in a business district. And then, when they were removed, and I know myself and Councilman Lascom brought this up last week, there are no parking signs that are there now actually aren't even legal. They never passed council. They were put up without legislation. So hopefully the administration, this I'm sure will pass council and be signed by the mayor, and hopefully the administration will also work towards allowing parking there, because it doesn't do anyone any good to keep that area vacant, you know, when the employees can be parking there.
Right. Well, unfortunately, we're down, you know, end strength, about 200 employees since 2009, and 2009 was the height of our employee, you know, numbering, our end strength, if you will, and since then, we're down to about 200 now. So we do have enough spots on the installation now, approximately 250, you know, to accommodate all the employees, so it's not an issue not being able to park on the perimeter of the installation. However, I do want to make sure that you understand that we don't want to shut down the city streets in the case we have to go to a heightened security condition, and we would have, you know, stickers on the cars, so that if the parking authority would walk by, all those cars that, you know, were permitted to park there would be properly marked, and they wouldn't have an issue with that, hopefully.
Well, thank you very much for coming.
Well, thank you all for your consideration and your vote, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave Dobson, resident of Scranton.
Good evening.
Okay, last week, when I was discussing the pension of the police, I said accidentally it was $25,000, and the police entitlement's pension, thanks to Wall Street, lost $25 million. So it's rather nice of them to tell us that our credit is trashed and we have to pay higher interest rates, but I wish they'd assume some responsibility for what they have done. And also, when I criticized the Affordable Health Care Act, I wasn't specific. In 2010, late 2010, we got an insurance policy for my wife in her RIM while she was unemployed for, with a $2,000 deductible, and we went back because she changed jobs just recently, and that very same policy and the very same money now had a $7,500 deductible. So, and I'd also like to thank all the people in Congress that did the 151 amendments, and keeping in mind that even in an act of terrorism or crime, you have to pay your own hospital bill. Excuse me, but you could have thought of something better if you had all that time to amend it 151 times. Now, last week, it was mentioned about vacant lots and letting them go to the public and so forth, but what I'd like to say is that on a non-buildable lot, the taxes are excruciating. I started out thinking that I was gonna get the lot for about $150 a year taxes. Nobody lives on it, it can't be built on, and it started out at about $330 a year, and it's up to $450 a year. So it's a very expensive proposition, and if anybody plans on buying one of these lots, it's buyer beware. It's a nice lot, I like it, but every time I look at the bill and think that it's just money going into the till, it's not, not what it seemed to be. And, okay, now on that Mattis Avenue, I'd love to see public parking permitted, and I don't see where it would interfere with anybody from General Dynamics. I think those signs should be just lifted out of there, period. I seen years back where people used to park there from General Dynamics, and there's nobody else in the area, or no other venue, but say like on a weekend, they have the iron furnaces and so forth, festivals, and they have to park three or four blocks away because there's no parking sign in front of, on Mattis Avenue. And there isn't any shift. I understand that they're down to 25% of their workforce currently, so you could deal with a problem like that if their workforce increased drastically on a later, at a later time. And last week, the housing projects were brought up in Southside, and the trash and so forth. Now, you know, every one of us owning a house in Scranton has to keep our house in fair condition and keep garbage picked up and litter and so forth. Why should they be exempt from a blight control? So in other words, if we sent a blight officer up there and just tell the management that this is not acceptable, to have bags of garbage strewn all over and torn apart and blowing all over other people's lawns and their lawn, I think that would be a totally sound idea for, there's no reason why people should have to put up with that. And, you know, lots been said on nonprofits and so forth, and one of my concerns is that what about nonprofits that preach hate? Do they deserve a tax exemption? Do they really deserve a tax exemption when they're preaching that other people should be dealt with violently or so forth? Personally, I think that any tax exempt that preaches in those terms should have their tax exemption lifted, and lifted 10 years back and 15 years forward. It's just a shame that you hear some of these things, and it's not just Islam, it's Westboro Baptist Church shows up at our, at our dead servicemen's funerals and protests and says they're burning in hell and stuff like that. It's disgusting, you know, so if they want to preach that, let them pay us some taxes. And once again, sequester all further property from tax exempt irregardless. Please, get some kind of conference, and we really have to get going on it, because in 10 years, we'll be paying on 50% of the town being tax exempt. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Don't forget the "bok bok bok." Don't forget the bok bok bok.
Good evening, Scranton City Council. Bill Jack with South Scranton resident, member of the Taxpayer Association.
Good evening.
I appreciate last week when some of my questions were addressed immediately after I was done speaking. I hope the same thing happens again tonight so my time's not interrupted. A lot of people have been complaining, and why they're complaining to me, I have no idea, but they are, about the 12 parking meters on Mulberry Street that have been removed for the University of Scranton. And their main complaint is that the parking meters were placed around the hospitals and people are required to put money and feed the meters when they go into the hospitals to visit their sick relatives and friends, otherwise they get tickets. And several people have already received tickets. But yet, the teachers, the professors, and students at the University of Scranton park for free. And first of all, who authorized that? Did it come through city council? Did the city council approve those meters to be removed? Or did the mayor do it on himself? Did Standard Parking do it? People want to know. They want to know who to hold responsible for those meters, those 12 meters on Mulberry Street to be removed and given to the University of Scranton. Basically, whoever did it basically gave the University of Scranton free parking in 12 spots.
When were they removed?
They've been removed for quite some time. There's 12 spots on Mulberry Street.
Then that, I believe that would have come before city council. Was that when the road was being widened and such?
I guess so.
And the university would have paid?
I hope my time's not running.
No, the university would have paid for those spots.
Can we see some proof of the fact that the university is paying for those? I mean, we've been told a lot of things that don't seem to ever happen.
I don't believe they're paying for them constantly. They paid a lump sum at the time to the city or the Scranton Park, more likely the Scranton Parking Authority than the city of Scranton.
Well, you know, again, you know, people are upset about this. This is one of the reasons why we have the attitudes and the dissatisfaction in the city because of things like this. The university parks for free, but yet if you go visit a sick relative at a hospital, you have to feed the meter. And so anyway, I'm the messenger, okay? People are asking me. I don't have an answer. I'm not an elected official and never will be, never want to be, you know, because I'm an honest person. So, but anyway, I guess, I don't know. Been asking the questions, hopefully they're watching the meetings and they got your answer. Okay? Again, back on parking meters, those meters down by the Chamberlain Corporation. You know, it cost us $70,000 to remove those meters, approximately. And it cost us another $70,000 to put them up when you originally put them up. So that's approximately $140,000 in taxpayers' money where we put the meters up and then we took them down. I say, let's take the signs down. Let's get rid of the signs. People, the employees at the Chamberlain parked there for years and years and years without a problem. So I say, do what you got to do, whatever you have to do. Get those signs removed and start allowing people to park there, you know, because it's totally asinine to have those signs up there. You know, we sit here, we all do, we come here, we complain about everything in the city because we have a lot to complain about. You know, we have outrageous budgets. We have outrageous borrowing, outrageous so on and so forth loans. We can't make payments. I mean, our payroll's over $1 million every two weeks, which comes to about $28 million a year. We really need to look at that. The elected officials really need to look at that. And someone needs to sit down and renegotiate or talk with the city employees because we cannot afford to pay them the amounts that they're being paid. Now, once the city gets back on firm financial situations, again, maybe we can do it. But right now, I mean, we sit here begging for money, asking everybody to help us out, and we give the mayor a $25,000 a year pay raise before we even know if the mayor can do the job. Furthermore, we didn't even know who the mayor's going to be, but yet we gave him a $25,000 pay raise. But on the other hand, we turn around, we say we don't have money. We can't pay this, we can't pay that, we can't pay our garbage fees, we got to raise taxes, we got to do this, but yet we're throwing razors out. That's why people are angry. That's why people are upset. And who's responsible for it? There are seven elected officials, I've said this before. There are seven elected officials in the city of Scranton. We elect all seven of you to work for us and to make our lives better. And when we see people making 70, 80,000, $90,000 a year, when the average salary in the city's about $24,000, $28,000, it upsets people. Something needs to be done about this. You know, blaming the nonprofits and everybody else, no, we got to blame ourselves. We paid too much money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Marie Schumacher, citizen and taxpayer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Agenda item 5B first. I'm sure that are pretty confident that Mr. Rogan will be speaking to this when it's introduced, comes up for introduction anyway. But I stopped attending meetings of the Vacant Property Review Committee when they kept getting canceled because there wasn't a quorum. However, there were always on the agenda items that where people were interested in buying homes and buying properties, I should say. They were somewhere commercial. But it's a rather expensive process to get the title, get a clear title, even though it's recouped, so it becomes a revolving fund. But I am definitely against taking the $30,000 away from the Vacant Property Review Committee. If they're not meeting or they can't get a quorum, the people who are members need to get down there and we need to start working on that. As I recall, when Mary Chalipko was here earlier this year, she said there were something like 300 properties on the condemnation list. Now, not all of them are obviously going to be up for demolition, but as I drive around the city, and I did take a different route here tonight, and I just, my heart bleeds for some of the people who keep their properties nice and they're next to something that's got broken windows and partially boarded up. So I am against that $30,000 being removed. Then moving on, again, just the state the city's in. I'm going to show my age now and tell you that when I was a kid, I listened to a radio, yes, radio, we did not have television. There was a program called Let's Pretend on Saturday mornings. And I think what we have to do, because when you look at our budget, just the expenditure side, I'll be talking more about the budget as the weeks go on. But of the expenditure side, $51 million goes to employee compensation and workers' comp. $47 million goes to tan repayment, court awards, and unpaid bills and debt. That leaves a grand total of $11.7 million to pay for all of the supplies and things that are needed to maintain our properties and our roads. And it just isn't enough. So I think council has to lead the way and have a Let's Pretend meeting with everybody involved, the representatives of the workers, and say, look, here's what we have coming in on a recurring basis that we know is going to be revenue that's there. And here's what's going out, and we have this mismatch. Let's come up with a solution. Because if we don't, we are going to end up in bankruptcy. We just cannot keep going. I would be willing to bet we're going to end up with another deficit at the end of this year. And where do we go to get, do we go back to court for a third time? And even if we get court approval, are we going to, are we going to be able to find anybody to loan us the money? I would assume the reason we don't have that 22 million yet is because we're having a hard time finding somebody to lend it to us. So I think that's something that should be considered, just an all-out, no-holes barred. We're in this together. Let's get ourselves out of it. And I think there are a lot of places where we could look for more money. I'm going to be talking about this as time goes on too. But one place, I was alerted to what's happening or not happening, as the case may be, by an anonymous letter writer who says he or she is a senior citizen who manages to pay my property tax and refuse bill on time every year. If the city allows property owners to run up over 10 years of taxes and take no action against these property owners, why should the rest of us pay our taxes on time? And that's certainly a legitimate and natural concern. Now, the condemnation, the city of Scranton condemned property policy, right here, says when a condemned property is being rehabilitated, the owner must furnish the Department of Licensing Inspections and Permits and the Zoning Bureau of the city of Scranton with an affidavit that is signed and notarized stating the following, and I'm only going to read two of the bullets. One is, "A copy of the tax certificate verifying that all city of Scranton, Scranton School District, and County taxes are paid in full. Second, owner of the property must present himself or herself to the city treasurer to verify the taxes and waste are paid in full." There's also a letter, can I finish this? Thank you. There's also a letter from the city solicitor saying that there were several properties that were abandoned and that this response is a notice to the trustee, creditors, and any other third party that in the event any entity becomes the record title holder of the following properties, then the entity must comply with the city's LIPS Department condemned property policy ordinance and all city of Scranton zoning regulations in order to have the condemnation removed. Now, I also checked on, one entity bought four of the six properties, two of which have had building permits issued. And I did not check today of all of the taxes that are owed on all four properties, but just of the two that have received building permits and, wait a minute, just bear with me for a second. It's here. Oh, okay. Here we go. One of the properties, and this is as of 20 through 2011, owed $23,384.20 and another $381.52 to the sewer account. The other property. I must have left a home on the table, but it was about $35,000, as I recall. Yet they're able to get permits. They weren't, I checked with zoning, they haven't come before zoning. So why do we have these policies if people are just doing whatever the heck they want? Now, that's a lot of money to slip out, and that's only a couple. How many times has this been repeated? And I've got other similar things that I'll be bringing to council on a regular basis, henceforth. So thank you for your time.
And if you can, you know, provide that specific information, the amount of taxes due, what type of taxes, the addresses and such. I think, you know, our office can be looking into it with LIPS, why they've been issued permits and that they are in violation of ordinances.
Okay.
We'll try to get the answers for you.
Yeah, I'll scan them in and forward them to Nancy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, city council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Tomlin Varski. And I've been here for all of city councils' caucuses. I was here when the manager for the parking garages addressed you. I heard him tell you that there was no specific plan to get the parking authority out of the hole. He also told you that you will have to come up with money so that they could pay their bond issue. What I didn't hear is what his qualifications for the jobs are. We know he's making $100 an hour. But what qualifies him to get that kind of an hourly rate? I was also here when the three representatives from the state were here, our three representatives from the state were here. I heard them tell the city or the city council that there was nothing they could do to help them out. Seeing as it was P E L who really put Scranton in the hole, I think there is something those three representatives should be doing to help us out. I also was here two weeks ago when a person came up and asked to have five meters taken out so he could have an entrance to a parking lot from Penn Avenue and an exit on Linden Street. I heard city council ask him if he would help contribute to the loss of revenue. And he abruptly replied, no. Those meters will bring in about $150 a week. Where are we going to make up that revenue? We keep losing revenue and no way of making it up. During the past year, city council has gone to the county commissioners with three different plans to help out the city, and you were flatly turned down on all three. I don't know what's going on, why no one wants to help out the city of Scranton. There must be something going on. Are we going to be made an example of or something? No one knows? Okay. The manager for the parking garage was asked if he would reduce his salary. And he told you flatly, no. I don't know why people come to, well, does city council know if he is charging his rate for appearing here that night?
That's a good question.
We don't know.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the answer.
We don't know that.
You don't know. Can we find out?
We can certainly ask Mr. Washo.
Okay, we have at least six speakers here tonight that came on their own time. They don't get paid for it. I think with what this county has provided for him, I think he should be willing to help us out a little bit. And I thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Mrs. Craig, if you would forward a letter to Mr. Washo posing that question, please.
And also, if you could add to that, if he would be charging to respond as well.
Chrissy.
What's up, buddy? I missed you last week.
Yeah, where were you? Take the night off?
We clobbered 22 nutmegs.
Kenny sent you a nice hat I have for you.
Yeah, Frank, I've got one question for you, Frank.
Okay.
We need to play around with little kids around the city. Like a play around with little kids, Frank. I need something for the little kids to play around down there, little kids to play around with. Thank you.
Okay, we'll work him out, Chrissy.
Is there anyone else? Mrs. Craig?
5A motions.
Councilman McGough, do you have any comments or motions tonight?
Yes, thank you. First of all, a rare occasion, I do agree with Mr. Morgan. I know in his own quiet way, Attorney Walsh has had a great impact. And I too think that he should be honored for this dedication to the city and to its residents. And hopefully, something will be done through the city to honor this gentleman. Secondly, rental registration, I did contact people at rental registration, and unfortunately, this week was a little bit of a difficult time for people working there. But I did receive, the one thing I did receive back from them was that as of April 25th, 2013, we have received $99,500 in rental fees. The amount budgeted for 2013, I believe, is $100,000. So, we're very close to reaching that budgeted amount, and I believe that there are still, you know, numerous outstanding fees, so we probably will reach that budgeted amount. And I will continue to ask for further information about the program. And last thing, I did receive a note that apparently the, American flag that was flying over the Vietnam Veterans Monument in Naog Park is apparently no longer there. I don't know if it was taken down, whether it was, you know, by Parks and Recreation or what happened to it, but I will, I will contact the Mark Dewar tomorrow to find out the status of that and if, if there is a replacement to, to be made at that memorial. And that's all. Thank you.
Mr. Rogan, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, just a few. Mr. McGough, when you follow up on the flag, if the city does not have another one, could you let me know the size? And I'll purchase the flag for the memorial if we don't have one.
I'm, I'm pretty sure that there are replacements available. I know in the past that when flags had become tattered and whatever, that there were, but thank you for the offer, and I will make that known to Mr. Dewar.
Absolutely. Just a couple of brief items tonight. The first, as numerous speakers mentioned, my condolences to the Walsh family. I didn't know Mr. Walsh as well as some others in the room, but every time I had a conversation with him, it was very kind, very enlightening, and he's a very smart, caring person that will be missed in the community. Just two items of business for tonight. The first one is the item on the agenda regarding the West Lackawanna Bridge. We did request from OECD a list of all of the accounts to look if there were alternate sources of funding this project. I know I spoke to Mr. Lascom, and I know he, he had the same concerns as me, and I'm sure many other colleagues might as well. My concern is that we're going to be taking away $200,000 of it from demolition of hazardous structures, which, and there's no secret that blight is one of the biggest issues throughout the city. Also, as was mentioned by a speaker, the vacant property review and Westside Falcons in North Scranton Little League, these are worthy projects and worthy groups that were funded. Now, it does say that some of the other ones, some of the projects were not eligible, and I did just receive this from Linda today, and she did ask that I call, so I do plan on giving her a call tomorrow morning to get a little more information, to see if it could be done another way. I will vote to introduce the legislation this week and, you know, hopefully find another way to fund it through working with OECD or try to off, find some offsets where the cuts aren't as drastic, especially, for me, the big one is the demolition of hazardous structures in the Little Leagues. Traveling through the city, you're lucky if you go one block without seeing a vacant home that's in need of demolition. Some blocks in the city have multiple homes that, that need to be demolished. And when we appropriate funds for the C D B G program, one of the areas where we've been focusing a lot, actually, the top two areas that council has focused to put a lot of money was paving and blight reduction. They're, they're two of the biggest concerns that everyone in the city has. And not only does a vacant home, you know, look bad, but it reduces property values in the neighborhoods and it causes safety issues, fires, it could collapse. So, hopefully, there is a middle ground that can be found here. I know I'll definitely be, be in touch with Linda, and hopefully, we could find a resolution on that issue. And one issue, it's not so much city-related, but it's just something I thought to bring up because it's been in the news. I'd just like to commend local universities for taking the name of Bob Mellow off some of the buildings. And I would request, and if, with my colleagues' agreement, that Lackawanna College changes the name from Mellow Theater to some name honoring veterans in our community.
Where you did that today.
Great, thank you, Mr. Jackowitz.
On Mr. Mellow's.
Well, I know they took the name off, and I know with the park, there was a proposed, there was a group out there that was organized to try to have it named after veterans. I don't know if it was, there was one to have it named after a specific person who fought for the country and died, and there were others who were pushing just for a veterans' park. And I hope that the officials at the local universities, now that Mr. Mellow's name is off those buildings and off those monuments, that it should be changed to honor people who actually did sacrifice for the country. And that is all I have for tonight. Thank you.
And thank you, Councilman Rogan. Councilman Lascom, do you have any comments or motions?
Yes, just briefly, I would like to also echo my colleagues and some speakers from the audience on my condolences to the family of Mark Walsh. I did know Mark personally for quite a few years, and, you know, he was always a gentleman, always willing to help. And in spite of his health problems, he always, you know, kept the high road and, and, you know, looked at the positive things. And he was always an inspiration, and my, my heart goes out to his family and relatives and friends. Also, two of my former colleagues, two retired firefighters have passed away this past week, too. One was mentioned, Harry Kirby and Jake Dequino. And, you know, they were both fine men who served the city well, and I would like to send my prayers out to their families also. And just lastly, the West Lackawanna Avenue Bridge, as Mr. Rogan stated, we do have concerns. Nobody knows, I've been more concerned about that the past few years than, than most. And, you know, ironically, there's this, and it is an emergency, we have to get this taken care of, but as of yet, nothing has been done to barricade the area of concern. I mean, it's still a dangerous situation at this time where we're trying to get funding to do this, there's still no barricades set up there. I think that has to be done immediately to keep people off that north sidewalk of West Lackawanna Avenue Bridge. In the meantime, we do, again, I have some questions on some of the funding sources for this here. This problem didn't happen overnight. There were opportunities, I think, missed over the past few years to get the proper funding to do this. And as Mr. Rogan stated, we just received some information today, and we will be working closely together to try and work out the funding sources for this. It does have to be taken care of, although I was assured by the PennDOT engineers that the, the road structure itself is not in danger, it's the pedestrian area that is the dangerous spot. But, you know, it's been ongoing for years. If you look back in the, and I just briefly looked at what Ms. Abley gave us today, they had some funding put in there back in 2006 that has not been used yet for the West Lackawanna Avenue Bridge. So, we do have several questions, several issues. I will be voting to introduce it, but I do not want to see some of these worthy projects that we had placed in there stripped away. And I believe we will be able to work something out for everybody's interest, and, you know, that's all I have to say on it. But I will be voting to introduce it, and we do have some homework to do beyond that. And there's a lot of questions on, on some of the funding. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Joyce, do you have any comments or motions?
Yes, I do. First, I'd like to express my deepest condolences to the family of Mark Walsh. Mark Walsh was a great man who served the city selflessly. And as Mr. Morgan and Mr. McGough mentioned, I do think that we should have a Mark Walsh Day in the City of Scranton. And if we could contact the mayor's office and see if that is something that can be arranged, that would be greatly appreciated. Secondly, the status of the city. Financially, in the bank right now, we have $9.9 million, and we have $490,000 in accounts payable as of this week. Obviously, in, obviously, at this point in time, we're receiving a lot of real estate tax revenue, being that it's real estate tax season, and we're also receiving refuse revenue. And in the future, that will slow down. That's why there's, at this point, an abundance of cash and not much in accounts payable. Next order of business, back on the 12th of April, regarding the Blue Cross contract, we had sent correspondence out to our city controller, Roseanne Novembreno, and she did respond, in response to her letter regarding the Blue Cross contract, this was properly bid out and the contract was signed. She did inform us that she tried to obtain a copy of the contract but was unsuccessful, and that she felt that this matter should be referred to the law department. So, Mrs. Craig, if we could please refer this matter to the law department, that would be greatly appreciated.
Councilman Joyce, actually, our office, Mrs. Craig specifically, has been working on this now diligently, almost daily. I know I made the initial request quite a while ago, and we have been in touch with both Blue Cross and the B A, and according to a response we received from Blue Cross, they should be providing it any day.
Okay, great.
So, we've, we've already taken the channels on that. But I think it's important that you brought up the point that not even the city controller had a copy of that contract. It seems very difficult to locate for some reason.
Yeah, I'd agree. Also, we received correspondence to inform us that bids were open on Friday, April 19th, 2013, in city council chambers for the cutting of South Scranton Albright Plot and Greenridge levees for a two-year seasonal contract, and Dunbar's Evergreen Landscaping was the only bidder, and their price for this bid was $28,800. And finally, we have a few requests. Number one, in regard to pools, as for Mr. Miller brought up earlier, if we could send a letter to the mayor's office and Mr. Dewar asking which pools will be open this year. And also, we had a concern from a resident regarding speeding in front of John Whittier School in the 800 block of Orchard Street, and also speeding in Naog Park. So, if we could ask Chief Graziano if he could keep this, keep these two areas in mind for a possible patrolman to go out and visit and monitor, that would be greatly appreciated. And that's all for tonight.
Thank you. Good evening. The Office of City Council received legislation from the city administration related to the recent food truck controversy. Because I have asked council solicitor Hughes to review the three proposed ordinances, they do not appear on tonight's agenda for introduction. These ordinances include, first, the repeal of File of Counsel Number 112 of 2009, the previous ordinance which provided for payment of an annual license fee for public eating or drinking establishments, and established annual application and renewal requirements, among other items. Second, the amendment of sections of the city code governing peddling and soliciting within the City of Scranton to include definitions of a food truck and food cart, setting hours of operation and proximity of food carts and food trucks to store buildings, and establishing an annual license fee for these types of businesses. And third, a new ordinance meant to replace the repealed 2009 ordinance which contains similar verbiage included in the previous two ordinances. And again, after review and correction by our solicitor, these ordinances may be placed on council's agenda for its May 2 meeting. If so, Seventh Order reading and final approval would occur on Thursday, May 16. During the intervening time, I ask any interested owners of eating or drinking establishments in the city to meet with owners of food trucks and food carts to discuss the ordinances proposed by the city administration, and offer council chambers as the location for this dialogue. The meeting will be solely among the business owners, and they can determine the date and time. Their final recommendations can be submitted to city council for its consideration of amendments to the proposed legislation. My hope is to see these businesses arrive at a solution that is fair to each of them. I firmly believe that all businesses should be welcomed within our city. Further, they should complement, not cancel out, one another. If the Office of City Council is not in receipt of the recommendations of the city business owners, on or before Monday, May 13, city council will proceed with the legislation and its own amendments, if any, to a final vote on May 16. Next on tonight's agenda for introduction is Item 5B, an ordinance for transfer of C D B G funds for the West Lackawanna Avenue Bridge project, specifically the repair of a crumbling wall and sidewalks. And last week, I asked my colleagues, specifically Councilman Rogan, who is chair of this particular committee, and Councilman Lascom, because he had done so much legwork leading up to this project, to review C D B G projects and accounts and determine whether other accounts might be tapped for this project, either in addition to or in place of the accounts chosen by OECD and the administration. They will submit their recommendations to our office in the near future in order that council will proceed with this vital legislation in a timely manner, since the bridge repair project is a high priority to city residents. And finally, I believe there was earlier discussion regarding the American flag over the Vietnam Veterans Monument in Naog. If I'm not mistaken, I believe I have a flag at home that was given to me by an Army officer who served in Afghanistan, and I can donate that flag then, and there won't be a need of a new purchase. And that's it.
5B, amending File of Counsel Number 41, 2008, File of Counsel Number 40, 2010, File of Counsel Number 53, 2011, entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor and Other Appropriate Officials of the City of Scranton to Take All Necessary Actions" Appropriate Officials of the City of Scranton to Take All Necessary Actions to Implement the Consolidated Submission for Community Planning and Development Programs to Be Funded Under the Community Development Block Grant Program, Home Investment Partnership Program, and Emergency Solutions Grant Program by Transferring $287,000 from Projects 09-05.8 West Side Falcons, 12-05.8 West Side Falcons Roof, 12-05.8 West Side Falcons Paving, 12-05.22 North Scranton Little League, 12-235.8 SRA Vacant Property Review Committee, 11-99 Demolition of Hazardous Structures to Project 12-01 West Granton Avenue Bridge Project..."
Excuse me, West Lackawanna Avenue Bridge Project. At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into cooperation agreement between the City of Scranton municipality and the West Granton Hyde Park Neighborhood Watch, WSHPNW organization, in order to file an application for financial assistance with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Economic and Community Development for Keystone Communities Elm Street designation.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question, I would just like to commend the Neighborhood Watch in West Granton for the good work they've been doing. And there's no doubt that Main Avenue in West Granton has changed for the worse through the last decade and even longer. And somebody who lives in that part of the town and travels that area every day, I think this is definitely, definitely welcome. And I know for myself, and I know council and the administration will be doing everything we can to try to assist with revitalizing that part of West Granton.
And I would also like to commend the West Granton Hyde Park Neighborhood Watch, especially Karen Foster and Mike Foster for their dedicated work that they do with the watch. They have a great organization, they're dedicated to making West Side a better place, and all of the members of the watch should be commended for their actions.
And also, I believe it's Tom Borthwick and Greg Evans that are co-chairing this project.
Oh, okay, sorry. Sorry that I forgot to mention them, and I'd also like to commend Tom Borthwick and Greg Evans as well.
I would just like to echo my colleagues without dragging this any further. Definitely, it's a worthwhile project, and I believe we'll all be behind it.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D, authorizing the City of Scranton to make application to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for traffic signal approval for the temporary traffic signal at the intersection of Cedar Avenue, State Route 3023, Scranton Expressway ramps, State Route 8025, and Orchard Street to remain as a permanent traffic signal.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yeah, just very briefly, those signals are now operational, and one of the things I think that will be interesting is to see how, and forgive me, but I can still only refer to it as Chamberlain, how the traffic flow is as workers are coming in and out of Chamberlain, you know, and see how those signals work at those times. So, take a look at that as well.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5E, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a lease agreement with Horsepower Harley-Davidson Incorporated to lease five police package motorcycles.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
6A, reading by title, File of Council Number 18, 2013, an ordinance transferring funds from Fund 01, City of Scranton, Penn Security Tan A and Fidelity Bank 2012 Tan accounts, which projects are completed and no longer needed for the conduct of city business, and abolishing and closing said accounts, and transferring the funds remaining in said accounts to the PNC General Funding Checking Account listed below.
You've heard reading by title of Item 6A. What is your pleasure?
I move that Item 6A pass, reading by title. Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
6B, reading by title, File of Council Number 19, 2013, an ordinance establishing a no parking zone along the westerly side of the 1700 block of North Washington Avenue, beginning from the end line of PIN number 13518-030019 northward to the corner of the 1100 block of Electric Street, westward and southward, ending at the end line of PIN number 13518-030017 on the 1800 block of Wyoming Avenue.
You've heard reading by title of Item 6B. What is your pleasure?
I move that Item 6B pass, reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh Order 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for adoption, Resolution Number 15, 2013, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a memorandum of understanding between the Department of the Army, Scranton Army Ammunition Plant, and the City of Scranton to allow parking along Mattis Avenue and River Street where no parking signs are present.
What is the recommendation of the Chair for the Committee on Public Safety?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. McGough?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lascom?
Yes.
Mr. Joyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for adoption, Resolution Number 16, 2013, approving the financing by the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority of a certain capital project for the benefit of St. Mary's Villa Nursing Home Incorporated, a Pennsylvania not-for-profit corporation, declaring that it is desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the City of Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, and the area served by St. Mary's Villa Nursing Home Incorporated, to have the project provided by and financed through the authority, designating the mayor of the city, or in his absence, the president or vice president of the city council, as the person to act on behalf of the city council as the applicable elected representative within the meaning of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended, authorizing such mayor of the city, or the president or vice president of the city council of the city, to take certain actions on behalf of the city council of the city as such applicable elected representative, and authorizing other necessary and appropriate actions.
As Chair for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7B.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. McGough?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lascom?
Yes.
Mr. Joyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, Resolution Number 17, 2013, accepting the recommendation of the Historical Architecture Review Board and approving the certificate of appropriateness for Pocono Sign and Graphic, 1147th Hideout, Lake Ariel, Pennsylvania, for removal of existing signage located on left-side facade, replaced with new signage of the same dimensions, black-and-white color scheme, and change business name on existing awning to match dimension of 10 inches high by 7 feet wide at 414 Spruce Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania.
What is the recommendation of the Chair for the Committee on Community Development?
As Chair for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of Item 7C.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. McGough?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lascom?
Yes.
Mr. Joyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7C legally and lawfully adopted. If there is no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned.
Jan, could you get me a copy of the ordinances that you mentioned?